Audio and video recorded per the open meeting laws of the state of Massachusetts. Tonight, we will continue the Lakeland Hills 40B comprehensive permit. The town did receive from the applicant a revised set of plans as of Monday evening, and currently they are being reviewed by our civil engineering peer reviewer, Sean Reardon. At the next meeting, he will be presenting his findings and his recommendations. So tonight, I think I'd like to ask the applicant, would you like to give us an overview of the revisions to the plan?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And for those of us, sorry.
That have not met, again, my name is Chris Ragastino. I'm counsel for the developer, Lakeland Hills. We last met on June 5th, and we left with the intent to submit updated plans, more detailed plans, by early July. And that was the plan that we had left this board with, and we were unable to obviously make that July 5th date. You know, as they say, the plan's the plan until the plan changes. There was some change of personnel at Andrews Engineering. Steve O'Connell is no longer with Andrews, so he's no longer the lead designer on the project. I'm going to introduce tonight, I believe the board's familiar with Travis Brown, who's also an engineer in training at Andrews Engineering, and his colleague, Kristen Labrie, who, in light of the change in personnel at Andrews, were able to jump on and get the plans to the board, albeit on Monday evening. I just wanted to sort of throw that out there as part of some of the things that were going on behind the scenes that prevented us from getting the plans to the board, as originally intended. As the board knows, we did volunteer an extra month, given the delay, to make sure that the board doesn't feel any pressure by the DHCD's regulations regarding 180 days to complete the planned delivery of additional details, traffic report, and some of the other elements that this board had asked for at the last hearing. I will say that in taking the additional time, I trust it's evident that there is substantial additional detail that has been provided on this plan set, which was delivered to the board this past Monday, including detailed elevations, some detailed grading of the site. We didn't actually submit a cut and fill analysis with the plans, but we have that ready to send to Sean and the board in the next few days, so that that can be part of his analysis for the next hearing. We did do a preliminary stormwater management analysis and plan and report with pre and post-development watersheds depicted on plans, which were submitted and that can be part of Sean's review. So with that, I just can turn it over to Travis Brown of Andrews now, who is going, again, as I said, be the lead contact with the board. Obviously, he's working with additional engineers and Kristen, behind the scenes, and Andrews to respond to this board's comments and anything that comes back from the board's peer review team. But in going forward with the process, as I announced initially at the hearing last time, the plans will evolve, they'll continue to evolve. You'll see that there are some noticeable alterations based on some of the grading and stormwater analysis that we've done. So I'll leave that for Travis, just to explain very generally, and then I think hopefully the plan will be to continue to elicit comments, so that maybe some of those comments can be incorporated into Sean Reardon's analysis as he continues his review. And then, we do have a traffic report ready to submit. I don't believe it's been submitted yet, but it's ready to hand in. And I don't think, we've heard that the board has appointed a peer review expert for traffic, but we can talk about the logistics for that going forward. So with that, I'll hand the microphone over to Travis, just to explain generally some of the revisions since the board last saw the plan.
Good evening. For the record, Travis Brown of the Andrews Survey and Engineering. Also here, my colleague Kristen Labrie, who also worked on this project, was an engineer in designing a large part of this. What I'd like to do is just go over in general what changed on the plan since the last time you folks have seen them. In general, at first glance, I don't think anything really jumps out. We maintain the boulevard-style entrance there at the beginning.
Can you not even see the, what he's pointing to?
Either plane.
Do you want to, Travis, which one's easier? Is that one easier? It might be...
This one may be easier on the eyes, so if I could turn it slightly.
If you want to turn it just a little bit, I just want to make sure the audience, as well as the board, can see it a little bit.
Does that work for you folks?
Yeah, could you indicate what the streets are and what the...
Yeah, sure. So just for an overview on this plan here, Seekonk Street is here at the top of the page, the entrance. That boulevard-style entrance comes in off Seekonk, up to a point where there's parking, which would be the central mailbox location. From there, it would continue on until this little roundabout that we've designed to be kind of an aesthetic feature, a traffic safety feature, once you get into this part. In general, the design has remained the same from the original. In this location here, you may have noticed, and I can flip back and forth a little bit for the design changes, but some of these units that were turned sideways just have been turned to face the street with the design of the stormwater system. This system's designed in compliance of mass stormwater standards. We've done soil testing on site, generally found sand, loamy sand material. So the stormwater basins that you see on this plan are in the same locations that they were previously. They've expanded slightly. Again, for instance, this area has changed slightly. There used to be units here. That's where we adjusted some units, shuffled them around, provided a stormwater basin here. This one was previously shown in addition to this. One of the bigger changes you'll notice is this stormwater basin here. We previously had units in this location. This stormwater basin here was put in to accommodate basically off-site runoff that comes into our site. So there's a part of this site that's ledged in here on the backside of this property that flows this way. So that basin was put in to accommodate that off-site drainage. Looking at opportunities to maybe avoid doing that with a drainage easement and something on an adjacent controlled property, but that's what we have at this time. So like I said, we've designed this in accordance with mass stormwater standards. We provided a stormwater, detailed stormwater report to the town and to the peer review engineer. And these are basically the design changes that have advanced since the last time you folks saw it. And as Chris said, we did do a cut-fill analysis. We've preliminarily graded the site, individual units between the units, to come up with a cut-fill analysis, which ends up being about 44,000 cubic yards in excess material on site. So those are, that's information that we can get to the town and to the peer review, if he's looking for that. So in general, that's the design changes. At this time, I'm not sure how technical you want to get. I understand that's being reviewed by peer review, but that's the design changes.
Excuse me, sir.
Sorry, Ashley. Mr. Chairman, I know you have a lot of people tonight. Could we just make sure that everybody directs questions through the board? I just, there's been some talking out of turn so far.
What we'll do is, we'll let them do their presentation, then we'll ask the board if they have any comments. Once the board is done with their comments, then what I'll do is open it up to the public. And what we ask is that you direct your questions to the board, and what we'll do is then decide whether council should be reviewing the answer, or if the applicant should be reviewing the answer. Okay? So we just, we try to do it that way, so that we don't have anybody speaking out of turn. Okay? Thank you.
It just would be helpful if I could, even though I'm here, if you just have a better idea where the idea is, because I won't ask anything else. But I know it's often Seekonk, but where?
Okay. All right. The other thing is, if anybody wants to speak, they're going to have to get a microphone, but I think I understood your question. You were asking where this is on Seekonk Street. So do you want to just give a brief, Travis, do you want to just sort of explain, I mean, do you know Seekonk? Why don't we, it's, okay, you live on Seekonk Street.
Actually, what's on the, on the...
Yeah. Do you see the big...
Sure. Just, I can explain.
Maybe you can give her some...
About approximately, the site's approximately between Fruit and Seekonk Street, Fruit and Cleveland Street, sorry. To the right of this plan, which is generally north, is Stop River Road, to give you some So that's, and, you know, there is a lot of information available on the town's website. All of the plans have been uploaded. This is the second hearing in this process, and, you know, oftentimes, there is duplicative information submitted. But we did a sort of overview and preliminary discussion of where the site is, how it relates to the distance to downtown Norfolk, and some of the other features in town. So just to give you, you know, a sense of where you can find additional information, there is a website, and Amy and the board, the board's assistants do a great job of making sure that's updated. Sorry, I missed my orientation there. So Stop River Road, right there. This plan is oriented north to south.
Okay.
Which one of those is my property at 120 Seekonk Street?
Say again.
Which one of those is my property at 120 Seekonk Street?
Amy, is that the only drawing we have there?
Do we know that?
Yeah, we can see it right on the map there.
We can see it right there.
Yep. I think yours is down here, closer to the bottom.
Where?
Right, Mr. Carpenter, that's yours, correct?
Do we have a pointer?
Do you have one, Travis?
Travis does.
Yes.
Want to point out the carpenter's...
Yep, right here. So this one...
179 Seekonk.
Okay, we'll, we'll get to those questions. Let's let him do his presentation first, okay? And then we'll get to some of those questions.
I didn't know what the U.R. was.
Yeah.
Are they going to play Travis? Do you have any idea?
We'll get, we'll get to those questions, okay? All right. Chris, go ahead. Anything else, or...
Well, no, I think, you know, as I explained, we wanted to describe just how the plans evolved since the last hearing, and then, now that we've sort of stabilized the development team and the engineering team behind the scenes, we could hopefully set sort of a plan going forward. And I know we have some additional neighbors here, and we got a lot of good feedback from the board at the last hearing, but I think, you know, tonight, we'll leave with some more feedback. You know, last hearing, we made a point of kind of recapping what Chapter 40B is and what it isn't, and some of the standards that this board will apply in reviewing these plans, and why this plan looks like it does. All of the board's hearings are available on YouTube, so if you're curious about the process and you were unable to attend the last hearing, you know, take the opportunity to review some of the information that's available online.
Okay. And you're still at 96 units in total? And that's 23 affordable, or 22 affordable?
25 percent.
Right.
So it's 24 units, and what we've done is combined what were previously standalone single-family into duplexes on this plan because of the additional stormwater management facilities that we had to add to accommodate some of that flow coming from off-site.
Okay. Okay. Dan, do you have any questions you want to open up to the board?
No, I didn't. I just wanted to just give a little flavor from my perspective as to where we stand with the hearing. And so the hearing opened, you know, last month, in June, and the applicant had asked us to not peer review the plans that were submitted, but, but to wait until they supplied a revised set, and that was supposed to have been supplied to the zoning board on July 5th. The traffic report was also supposed to be provided on July 5th. And the revised plans were submitted just recently, and the traffic report is not here yet. The applicant has provided a month extension, which is appropriate, given that this delay was not caused by the board, it was caused by the applicant. So that, that's totally appropriate, and that, that's a good thing. But I just wanted to make clear that the revised plans were, were submitted, not at our request, it was, it was the applicant's desire to refine their plans, and what we're hearing tonight is that the refinements were, seem to be mostly on, on the drainage system, because there's not a lot of other changes to the design of the project. There's no reduction units. There's some tweaking here and there. So that's where we stand. I think the next steps for the board is to pick peer reviewers. We have two proposals for traffic. We have a wetland proposal, landscape, architecture, and architecture. And that's basically, I think, where we stand currently.
I think we'll, we'll be doing that tonight, picking those peer reviewers, reviewing them. Okay? Questions from the board for the applicant this time?
Mr. Chairman, just a point of interest, since there are so many new folks here tonight, I think it might, might be helpful, either Dan or you, explain, you know, what the peer reviewers do, what, how that process works, how they advise the board, and, because I'm guessing a lot of the folks here have never been through a 40B review process before, so that, you know, five or 10 minutes.
Sure. Yeah, I, and maybe just as a refresher for the board as well, that the main function of the zoning board under Chapter 40B is to consider waivers from bylaws, and, and that's what the statute's all about. The statute is Chapter 40B, it's a state statute. It's intended to break down so-called barriers to the development of affordable housing, and those barriers are perceived to be local bylaws and regulations that, that restrict development. So the, the purpose of the statute is to allow for waivers from local bylaws and regulations. The zoning board's role and job is to consider whether to grant or deny waivers. And sometimes, the grant or deny is not black and white, it's gray. The board could deny a waiver to an extent, and not completely, but partially. But that's the main function of the zoning board. And so for the zoning board to understand what waivers to grant and deny, it needs to have a factual record. It needs to get input, advice, opinions from its own consultants, from experts such as civil engineers and traffic engineers and wetland scientists. It also needs to get input from town boards and officials, like the Conservation Commission and the DPW director. And of course, it gets input from the, from the public, including neighbors and abutters. So that's the function of the hearing. The hearing is here to collect evidence. It's to create a factual record. And then after the hearing is, is complete, the board closes the hearing, it deliberates, and then decides whether to grant waivers and, and whether to grant, whether to grant the permit, could deny a permit. And if it grants a permit, the board will think about what kind of conditions to put in that permit, and those conditions can essentially relate to any local concern that's presented and a concern that's tied to a local bylaw regulation. So in previous projects that this board has reviewed, it's, it's issued comprehensive permits subject to conditions. Those conditions have to do with the way the project's built, the way the stormwater system is, is constructed, the way the, the houses will look from the street, you know, things like that. So that's the general, the, the general framework of the statute, and, and the role of the zoning board, and the function of this, of this public hearing.
I'd add one thing, we have 180 days, state, the state mandates, we have to have this process done within 180 days. We can request an extension from the applicant, and they can either deny or accept our request, but everything has to be done within 180 days, and we're, what, 30 days in now? How many?
We are, but we already got an extension.
Okay, so we're, we're, yeah, so, yeah, so we basically have about 180 days to go. So, you know, this is a multiple hearing process, multiple months, so it's, it's a long process.
Right. And I guess I should add that this board is going to hire consultants to advise them on, on these issues, primarily on the design of the project, which includes the design of the stormwater system, the septic system, the roadway network, the architecture of the, of the buildings, the landscaping, and, and things like that.
Good. Thank you, Dan.
Yep.
Kevin, do you have any questions?
Couple of questions, I'll keep them brief.
Okay.
We'll have a couple of days, obviously, review materials. A couple of these comments are a little bit technical, so like I said, I'll keep them brief. One thing I did notice is in...
I can't hear you. Please speak. I can't hear you.
In the stormwater report, you reported that all the soils on site were, or the vast majority of soils on site were classified as D soils, where you indicated earlier that most of the, or the soils you found in your soil testing was, you know, sand and sandy loam. So you have soils that are called hydrologic soil group D. They're, they almost act as impervious, and what can sometimes happen is, it, it overestimates your pre-development conditions, which allows you potentially to underestimate the size of your stormwater systems in the post-development, where you, you are essentially allowed to discharge more runoff from your site. And that's something that I think needs to be cleared up, because all your testing on site that I saw from your test pits indicate that loamy sand, and you're indicating like a clay-type, impervious material in your stormwater report.
Yeah, we, we discussed that actually shortly before the hearing. Kristen actually was working with Travis on, on the stormwater management plan, and from the design team's perspective, it was done in order to be more conservative in the overall estimates, and, and both pre and post. So we can discuss that with Sean and see whether or not he feels as though the designation was appropriate, but understanding it can cut both ways. It can overestimate pre-development runoff. But in, in reviewing it, I think we got a good answer as to what's the appropriate assumption, understanding that there is a lot of much better soil than the D soils that you're referencing, or, sorry, the D variable that was used in the stormwater analysis that you've identified.
I do agree, it can go both ways. Another thing I just wanted to touch upon, I thought I had mentioned in the previous meeting, I just wanted to see where those septic systems lie on those two adjacent properties right along Seekonk Street, to just make sure that those proposed stormwater systems aren't too close in proximity to those systems.
Yes, yeah, we'll call those out, and I think that was a, a note that I had had in my plans, I think maybe the shift in the design team, that particular detail was missed, but I don't know.
Travis, have you noticed that? Yeah, so we did, in fact, go to the board to help and get records on this. There's a cesspool behind this, existing cesspool behind the house. So we're greater than 50 feet with our stormwater design to that system, so we did look into that, that property.
And then to the, the property to the south as well, did you look at that one?
I don't believe we found any record of that, so we're going to have to try to track that down, either in the field or with some further research to see where that system is.
Okay. Just want to make sure there's the proper separation between those two.
Sure.
And then, really, my last main question is just that stormwater system near Seekonk Street, the one on the southerly side, it looks like it potentially discharges to that abutting neighbor's property. I believe it's 138 Seekonk Street.
So you're talking about this lower basin?
Oh, the other basin.
This one?
Yes.
So currently, in the pre-watershed map, the time of concentration or the flow path actually goes up and then back down through the back of their houses. That's where it currently flows, and it's, it's an enormous amount in the pre. So the post, we have it going the same amount, but it's reduced to, it's reduced enormously from the pre. So that is the natural path of the water, and it's an emergency overflow. It's only used in the 100-year-plus storm.
It's part of my concern with using the, the two different soil types, you know, I think we both understand that, you know, it, it does go both, it goes both ways where, you know, it could, you know, affect your systems. But you're also turning that area that's, you have a sheet flow coming down essentially that hillside, and now you've concentrated it into a pipe and a, a riprap overflow, where just want to make sure, you know, one of the stormwater standards is to mitigate flooding on a 100-year storm event, where it just needs to be looked at.
Yep.
I just want to make sure that that's properly taken care of.
Yeah, we analyzed that point, that information's in the report, we suspect. Sean, if he has issues with it, that'd be addressed, and then we can look at it a little closer also.
Okay.
Okay, Dan. Joe?
No. Peer reviews, what I'll be looking forward to seeing.
Right.
Just one question. On the fire chief's comments, did he have an issue with the entrance into the project? I, I don't have the letter in front of me. Do we have a copy of Cole's letter? I don't need it tonight, but just as a refresher, can we pull that up this week? Because I thought he has some comments about the...
I don't have it.
No, no, we can wait. I just want to make a...
We'll just, I'll ask Amy to pull it for the next meeting.
Yeah, for the next meeting. I just want to make a mental note for us to take a look at that, because I thought he has some comments, safety issues that he was concerned with on that entrance.
I think it was the curvature of the entrance of getting into it, but we can look at that.
Yeah, okay. I just want to drill down on that a bit.
All right. Do you have anything?
Yeah, I'd just like to clarify, if the applicant could explain, between Lot 49 and 25, right, it appears to be, I'm assuming that this is designated as wetlands, and it continues through to Lot number 39, and it appears to just kind of disappear, and I just, and it's also the same path, which you have a dense amount of tree growth. Can you just explain to me what, what that is?
Travis?
So that shaded area that you see running through the site is the wetland that was delineated through the Conservation Commission process, and it does extend off-site, but we didn't continue to delineate it off-site, because we're not proposing any construction in that area off-site.
When, actually, off-site on the Axberg parcel, it kind of disappears in the ground, about 15 to 20 feet past the storm boundary, it just disappears, and then it shows itself, it shows itself again about 100 foot south of that, that point there. So right there, it disappears down into rocks, large rocks, boulders. Janet Delanga has walked it, and she could give you some updated information. And then it shows itself back down where the Army Corps Engineers has that strip a couple of hundred feet lower. But it does actually disappear, and it's dry and rocky in that area on Axberg's parcel.
And I guess I'm looking more at the other end.
So this end here where it starts?
Yeah, that's where it starts. That's the low point, the catchment area for several kind of large rocky holes. So that's like in the bottom of a hollow, right there. If you look at the topography, you can see, so that's why it, it starts to appear right there. It's basically catching the runoff from the parcel 136 and then Mr. Camara's parcel. That's where it kind of appears on the property.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, that was one of the other things we could discuss, and I think it was mentioned at the last hearing, that this board was going to be engaging a peer review expert to review wetlands delineations. So maybe that's something we can also talk about tonight. I don't know if any progress was made in that area.
Yeah.
I think Beta perhaps was.
Correct. Yep, we will be, we'll be looking at Beta this evening for that.
Okay.
Okay. Don, anything else?
Not at this point.
Dor, anything? We've also, we've, we've actually given these revised plans to all the departments in town as well, fire, police, DPW, to review them. So we're, we're waiting for their comments as well. So they just got them, I think, yesterday morning. Amy passed those out. Have, um, I know you're going to give us, when will we be receiving the traffic study in the next couple of days, Chris?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
It's complete, it's just, we'll press send on the email.
Just as a question, have there been any talk about sidewalks on Seekonk Street at all, coming out of the development as part of that?
So we had discussed those types of concepts at the last hearing, and I think we put a lot of time into the engineering in the last 60 days since then. But we haven't gotten to the point where we've really examined the feasibility of that and how it would fit in. But as I mentioned at the last hearing, you know, how this site relates to Seekonk Street, the town at large, its proximity to the train station, which, you know, is a feature in town, is definitely something that we'll continue to explore during the hearing, but we didn't get to the point where we had a discussion where we figured out whether or not that's something we could say thumbs up or thumbs down on.
Okay. Thank you. All right. At this time, we're going to open up, before we do the appointing the different peer review reviewers other than the civil engineering stormwater, which we already approved, I'm going to open it up to the public. I'm going to ask you to state your name. You should have the microphone in front of you, and if you could address to the board, and then we will ask the applicant as we feel necessary. Okay? This gentleman right here, just got to grab a mic, okay? Kristy?
My name is Richard Tolvan, I live at 179 Seekonk.
I think you got to take it out. Okay, you got it out of the bag? Yeah, okay. Make sure the green light's on.
I'm, the green light is on.
Okay.
You can hear me?
Yes.
My name is Richard Tolvan, I live at 179 Seekonk, and my first question is whereabouts is this road going to come out in relationship to my house? Can someone point that out to me?
Make sure you have a mic.
Are you familiar with Axberg's farm? Or Mr. Brogan's horse stables? This is closer...
This is closer on the, where Cleveland Street empties onto Secong Street.
Okay.
It's closer to Mr. Brogan's property, and I believe you're closer to the Medfield lane.
Yeah.
So, this, we're on, we're on the Cleveland side, Cleveland Street, Mr. Brogan's site, we're at empty zone, we're right there.
Okay, now, is this going to have to have a traffic light put in with it too? With all, it's going to be probably 100-plus cars coming out of there.
Right, so we just submitted to the board a traffic report, and we'll probably have an entire hearing on traffic, and, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I, if you'd-
I understand.
... respond directly.
Now, I'm wondering, has anyone put any thought into what this is going to do to the property values of the houses there? I spent my whole life buying a house out there, and all I can see is my property values being cut in half by a project this big. And on top of this, they just put another project down on Cleveland Street with 32 houses, and the amount of cars coming out of that is going to just destroy this neighborhood. I'm just wondering if anyone's thought of that, and I hope the board here is thinking about that, about how, you know, we put our whole lives into buying a house like this, and all this traffic is just going to change the whole, the whole nature of the neighborhood. And I hope some of the other people here are thinking about that, and I hope the board thinks about that. I mean, really, goes to sleep tonight and thinks about, you know, how I paid for this house, and now half that money's going to go right down the toilet. Thank you for letting me speak.
The applicant will be providing a traffic study to the board, we will be hiring a peer reviewer to review the traffic study, who will be representing the board.
I hope you hire someone to tell you what the property values are going to do, and how it's going to affect our lives.
But they'll be telling us what the traffic situation is and how this development will affect traffic, what mitigation will have to be done in order to make sure that the traffic is not affected adversely to the residents on Secong Street, Cleveland Street, Fruit Street, and any abutting streets.
And I hope you, I hope you really think about what, how it's going to affect our lives.
We will.
That's a, because you're all really decent people, and, you know, we're all in this together.
Yes, we are. Thank you. Man?
Hi, I'm Kathy Reinhardt on 20 Stop River Road. I have two questions. The first is, based on the schematic that is being shown-
Can you speak up a little, Kathy? I'm sorry.
Yes, based on the schematic that's being shown, it looks like there's only one entrance and exit to these units, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so I'd be interested in seeing what the traffic pattern analysis looks like based on that. The second question is really just to understand the magnitude of the residential impact here. So, I understand, I think it was 96 units?
Correct.
Is that correct? And you mentioned there were duplexes, so how many actual physical buildings will there be? And how many people do we anticipate living in these buildings? And for example, are they two-bedroom, three-bedroom? You know, how many people are we looking at, how many? And what are the requirements for living in these units? I understand some of them are affordable housing, but are there requirements for the other buildings?
Chris, do you want to handle that?
So, I think Dan can speak to it as well, but federal fair housing laws actually prevent you from putting a cap on the number of people that can live in a home. So, as far as the number of people that you can actually say can live in a residence, you can't do that under federal law. But we do plan on having two- and three-bedroom units in the development, and I think, you know, it would be consistent with some of the other developments we've seen in town in terms of just the types of neighborhoods that are being built, and the families that are moving in there. So, I think ultimately, you know, we'll have the final bedroom count, and that's going to dictate some of the issues with the wastewater treatment. But as far as, you know, planning for the size of a family that can live in the house, it's something that generally isn't considered.
First, how many buildings are there in total? I know some are duplexes, some are-
So, there's 70 buildings, 70 buildings, yes.
70 buildings, okay. Does that answer your question?
No.
No? Well, that part of it.
No, I understand that you can't necessarily predict how many people will be living in each unit, but the design of a house will give you a good sense of how many people probably will live in the unit. So, two and three bedrooms gives me a better sense of how many people we're talking about.
Yes, go ahead, Dan.
This probably is a good time to mention that all of the plans that have been submitted are actually posted on the town, on the zoning board's website. If you go to the zoning board's internal website, and then there's a link to Chapter 40B projects, and then, then there's a link to this project. There's actually links to all the projects, but this project, actually, Betsy's going to pull it up, I think. And there are actually, all these floor plans are on there, so you can see the floor plans for the buildings, which will show you how many bedrooms there are, you know, there might be some rooms that aren't called bedrooms, but could be, you know, so you can kind of get a sense of what, how this is all going to play out. There's also narratives explaining, you know, a lot of, a lot of information, so you can ask questions tonight, but there's also a lot online.
Just to follow up to the previous question, so are there requirements for the non-affordable housing units?
Are there requirements in terms of what?
Requirements, eligibility requirements for living in these non-affordable housing units?
Income-wise?
75%?
Yes.
There's no income requirement, they can sell those at whatever price they can get for them. There has, and for every 40B project, 10% of the units have to be at least three bedrooms. So, the board doesn't really have any, excuse me, discretion to dictate how many bedrooms are in, in the units that are being proposed. We have, we have to accept at least 10% as three bedrooms, but even then, we, the board doesn't really have the authority to tell the applicant how many bedrooms can be in these units. And this is probably also a good time to mention that a lot of the rules have been dictated by the state and by the statute and by regulations that are set by DHCD, which is a state agency. So, the board's ability to impose conditions, to restrict this development is very, very, very limited. So, to the first gentleman's question about property values, the board actually can't consider that as a factor in its decision. As much as the board may want to, as much as we agree that that might be a viable issue otherwise, it's not a viable or relevant issue legally as part of this process.
So, if I could just ask one more question, based on what you had just offered, these are being sold or rented?
Sold.
Sold, correct. And that was actually a change that the applicant proposed early on. Originally, the development was going to be half rental, half for sale, and we received some feedback early on that the rental component wasn't as desirable for the neighborhood, essentially how it was pitched to us, so we revised it, so it's 100% for sale. So, these will be for-sale houses, sold, you know, people investing in the community, owning the house, and, you know, that's the type of product that we're looking to develop here.
Okay. Questions? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Kathleen McKenna, 24 Stop River Road. Just had a quick question, that, the gas main that's going in on Secong Street, which I assume is going to be like a several-month project, is that for this, this development that we're putting in? Is that the main using that's going in?
I'm saying, is that specifically for this development?
Yeah.
No, that's, that was, that was, that's a, that was planned, I think, a couple of years ago, the gas coming down the line. I don't know, have you people spoken to the gas company yet with regard to tying in?
So, we did have discussions with them, you know, the intent is to tie in at some point. You know, I think preliminarily, we're showing that is the plan to tie into the gas. I know on Cleveland Street, at Lakeland Farms, they did end up using buried tanks to do propane where gas wasn't available, and obviously, you know, that's sort of like an emergency fallback. But the intent and the plan that's going to be shown, at least preliminarily, shows a gas line, and we did have discussions with the gas company that it will be available for this development.
So, they, the gas is coming down as far as the, as your property?
Yes, that's, that's the intent, yes.
Okay.
Does that mean Secong Street is going to be closed for a while, or like after, does that mean that Secong Street is going to be closed for a very long time with this?
I don't have the answer to that, that would, probably the DPW, I know it's starting, I guess they-
I was just wondering.
The sign said 9/17, then they changed it to it's going to start today, I guess or yesterday.
Yeah.
Is, they're starting to close Secong Street again, so.
Yeah, I was just wondering, you mentioned traffic, and then there's this and then that, and then how long it's going to be Secong Street not being able to travel down.
Bob McGee could probably, if you really want to get a timeline, Bob McGee would be the best source for that, okay?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just briefly, I know, you know, this board has a lot of experience with 40B projects. Norfolk has had several paths in front of this board in the last several years, and the level of detail that goes into the review process gets more granular than you would imagine, to the point where we're discussing the construction protocols and the construction management plan as to how traffic that's being generated to develop the site and, and, you know, bring in some of the equipment and do some of the work, and Secong Street is actually prosecuted and managed. So, this board is taking care to review those types of issues in the past, but, you know, obviously bringing up those concerns during the public hearing makes sure that we don't forget anything, which is always helpful.
Next question. Have a mic?
Yes, I do. Patrick Keenan, number 66, number 68, number 70, 72 in Secong and to Campbell Street. I do have a few questions. My family's been here since 1912, I live in an antique. How much does the federal government know, because I work for the US Postal Service, about that NBCBU, which is a cluster box, is that going to be installed right in the beginning?
Chris?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
The cluster box for the mail, mail carrier, is that going to be put in the beginning?
Oh, so where we designated the common mail pickup?
That's correct.
Yeah, so, you know, generally, we depict that preliminarily on any development, but ultimately, the postmaster general gets to designate how they want to service the site.
Have you talked with the-
So, at this stage, no, we don't, we don't get to the-
It's not the postmaster general, it's the postmaster in Millis, I'm an acting postmaster in Rentham. Have you discussed with John Gonye, who handles the delivery of mail, as far as how the carrier, is it a hazard? The number is 3769187.
Prelimarily, no. And I think, you know, again, this board has a lot of experience with 40B. One of the elements that wasn't mentioned tonight but was described at the first hearing is that the plans that are presented to this board, although very much developed and very much peer-reviewed, are still very preliminary in nature. And frankly, this is one of the first projects that I've been involved in where the location of the mailboxes was actually, or the proposed location of the mailboxes was actually called out at this early of the state, of this early of the review process. So, you know, it's definitely something, it's not fixed and final, but preliminarily, we're proposing it there. If there's a problem with it being in that location, then that's something that we have to resolve. So, one of the other things that wasn't mentioned is, this project has to comply with all state and federal requirements. The only thing that we're talking about here are local regulations that might limit the development, so that if there's some federal standard with regard to the postal service, it being a constitutionally recognized service, you know, it's baked into the Constitution, we're going to make sure that we satisfy that. So, we have to. So, we'll have to find-
I do have a few other questions.
Okay, just let him, let him complete his answer, and then you can ask the next one, okay? And then try not to interrupt, okay?
I'll stand first.
Or you would not be pleased.
Don't worry about it.
All right, go ahead. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, do you have another question?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
Is it true, with a builder with low income, they get a subsidy from the state for low-income housing? I'm not too sure. I'd like to know that answer.
Chris?
So, the subsidy, there are two, two aspects of a 40B project that I look at as a subsidy. One is the type of financing that the project has to use, and the project has to have some element of funding that is subsidized in that there's a slight discount on the interest rate because it's federally subsidized or state-subsidized funding. So, the funding is one subsidy, it's not cash that goes into the developer's pocket, but it is a subsidy by definition. The other subsidy that is really a part of a 40B process is the allocation of affordable units. You know, we are, we are dedicate, or, sorry, the allocation of affordable units that results in the density bonus. So, the ability to build a more dense development than you otherwise would is, is in some respects sort of that element of a subsidy for, to encourage the development. The law is all about encouraging development. It's not just, it really is not just about the affordable units. The affordable units are an important part of it, but the law is, is one of the few tools that developers have to build anything other than a single-family house on a 40,000-square-foot lot outside of Boston. So, that is another aspect of the subsidy. But there's no direct cash that goes into the developer's pocket, and the other end of it is that the developer in a 40B project is in partnership with the town. So, if the developer actually exceeds 20% of, if the developer's profit exceeds 20% of total development costs, which are audited by the state, that money would go to the town. So, there's a, there's a collaboration there. And, you know, it's, it's just the nature of 40B as it's evolved over the years, it's really used as a tool to develop, develop housing, develop, develop housing outside of 128.
I have another question, Chris.
Go ahead.
Norfolk was not its own town in 1850 when my grandparents' house was built, it was North Rentham. The infrastructure in Norfolk, there is no business, Main Street is nothing if you look at it. We have 115, we have a few businesses there. We also have 1A, very few there. Rentham, they have the Rentham Premium Outlets to support the tax, tax base. They also have Route 1, which has, can support this tax base. Every single tax infrastructure is based on the homeowner. Norfolk Power Equipment moved out of Norfolk because Norfolk doesn't like business. Glenn Colter is my neighbor, he moved right over the line to Rentham, kept the name, and you increase housing, then you're also going to increase the school system, the fire department, the police department, everything else. That means everybody's taxes will increase, true or not?
You are correct. You are correct. And again, as Dan pointed out, this board is limited on what we control with regard to the state and federal laws. And it's, it's frustrating, it is frustrating, because we don't have the business and the tax base in Norfolk, other than the residential tax base, to fund for more schooling, increased fire department, increased police department. Water, as we all know, we have a, Norfolk does not have a plentiful of water, and at some point, we could end up having to pay for water outside of Norfolk, which none of us know that cost yet. So, you're correct in all those, in those comments.
I just have two more questions, and I'll pass the mic away.
Okay.
Norfolk's, Norfolk's railroad track was just resurfaced, and it is a very big speedway from going from downtown to, into Medfield to 27. One of my neighbors has a motorcycle, I am not going to say his name, that's private, it's totally illegal with the United States Postal Service, he lives on Secong Street. He has a motorcycle, he was coming from Main Street, this is before the street got resurfaced. Thank God my wife was not home, he was horsing around, went over the railroad track, dumped his bike, every conceivable piece of clothing was ripped off of him, he landed in my driveway, and he was in total shock. I called at that time, I know the number, 508-3232, I'm a retired firefighter from 10 years. And how is this going to impact, they've already, what, you cannot fight the railroad, the railroad is going to do what they did, that is just a nice steep slope, the traffic is going to go faster. nice, steep slope. The traffic is going to go faster. You're going to have more traffic on Secong Street af, exiting out of this development. That's a very big safety issue. How is that going to be addressed?
During the traffic review, these, that will all be addressed. The, the actual speeds of the road, what the speed limit is, triangulation of the entrance to this development, number of cars per day going down Secong Street, as well as Main Street, Cleveland Street, and Fruit Street. All that will be taken into account, and that's what the peer reviewers, one of their jobs, or their essential job is to do. As everybody knows, I think a lot of people have seen Everett Street is getting a lot of attention and Pine Street because of the number of accidents, but it's amazing, also the number of accidents on Rockwood Road in the last 10 years, the number of accidents on Main Street. I think both of them exceed 100 in total. So, all that will be reviewed during the traffic study. You have one more question?
One more, maybe two.
Okay. And you have to speak up just a little bit.
Maybe one, maybe two, I'm not too sure.
You have the floor.
I am an acting postmaster in Rentham, Massachusetts. They do have a cluster housing development, which is being built by Thomas DePlacido off of Franklin Street. I've never seen so many, this is not low income, this is just average. People like to have new houses. Problem being is that the houses are so close, I handle the persons forwards, they come in, they said they made the wrong mistake. Your house to your neighbor's house is less than four feet apart. You want a new house. Tom DePlacido is a very good builder. He's also doing a new subdivision up off of Lawrence Street, the same thing. I graduated with him in 1984 from King Philip. Very, very good builder. But the idea behind that is you have so many houses so close, you have your windows open, you have an argument with your wife, the neighbors are going to hear it. I have maybe eight to 10 people move out of that subdivision. We made the biggest mistake in our lives. They want to live in an older home with a lot of property, and they stay in Rentham.
Again, one of the, one of the peer reviewers will be architecture, and we will look at that. I mean, I think on the last page of their plans, they actually show the sideline distances to the properties. But, and that's also be one of the things the board reviews, is the distance between sites. We want to make it so that this development doesn't look a lot different than what Norfolk is used to. One of the reviews we did when we were looking at the Abbeyville project, which you referenced up on Lawrence Street, is that we did not want it to look like that project off of Franklin Street in Rentham that DePlacido was building. The driveways are very short, the houses are very close together. It is, it does have an affordable element there. But again, during this process, that will be one of the peer reviews. If you, if you, if some of you who are here remember, the enclave which we just finished had five revisions to the plans, and, and that was over 180 days. Abbeyville, which is still open, has gone over a year and has done probably more than 10 revisions. So, what we're seeing tonight will probably not be the final plan, and part of, part of the process is, besides the peer reviewers, is obviously your input to develop this plan. And so, all that will be taken into account as well as the, as well as the side lots. Okay?
One last question.
No.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Wyler. Very strong.
Only because you're a Keenan.
Yes, that is correct. Keenan's Crossing. When I was a firefighter, this is a long time ago, I was the youngest to get on the fire department when I was 18. I'm 53 now. They built Arnold Road, which is for affordable housing. We all know where that is, correct? Good. I can't judge people. I will not judge people. It's totally wrong and incorrect. Arnold Road was built for families. The state does run it, as well as Hillcrest Village. I can agree and I can disagree. If you have a drug addict that's single, they'll put them in Hillcrest Village, living next to an 89-year-old person. That's totally wrong. The town cannot control it. The state does it. If you have a family down on Arnold Road, you can physically move in. I knew a person that was the deacon at my church, St. Jude's, David Gioni, very good friend, and he lived there. But you have a total different dynamic of people that do live there if it's affordable housing. One of those houses, and I was there, I will not give out the name, I won't give out the number, the kid had, the son, a lighter for a gas grill. He took the lighter, put it into the closet, and burnt it flat. I don't want to see that happen either. That's my last question.
Yeah, Arnold Road, I don't, Arnold Road I don't think is an affordable, I think it's a section eight housing, I'm not sure. This will be affordable. So, it's, it's a little different dynamic than Arnold Road. The good news is, Amory, Amory Battistone, you have another applicant to be on Norfolk Notables, Mr. Keenan here. So, there you go. Next question.
Diane McElway.
Oh, sorry, Karen.
Diane McElway, 152 Secong Street. Okay. The new drive will come right abutting my backyard and swimming pool.
Do you want to come up a little bit? Can you, do you want to come up a little closer, just so you can show?
Oh, sure.
You're allowed to.
Do you want me to point?
Come on up.
So, I'm right next to Jason Monica Cullen, right next to the Cullens. My first question is, where do we stand on the sanctions from last year from the unauthorized work performed by the developer?
Dan, I'll let you, I think that's with the Concom still, but I'll let you in.
Well, the building inspector issued an enforcement order that was appealed by, by this developer. The zoning board spent a few months understanding it, researching it, hired a consultant to corroborate it, and ultimately issued a decision that affirmed the building inspector's findings, found that a violation existed, did not assess any further fines, but made a finding that the violation did exist. That decision was appealed to Superior Court by a neighbor who's here, and that is still pending. I'm not involved in that appeal, so I don't know what the status is, but that, that decision's been appealed. But as far as that case is concerned, the case is closed as far as the zoning board's concerned, and it really has nothing to do with this application.
So, I guess my next question would be, thank you to the board for serving, but how does that affect us moving forward as far as trusting a developer who would do those things as a town? I'm having real trouble with that.
I think that this process is all about verify, and it's not just this developer. Any developer that comes into town that wants to build something has to prove everything. And, and that's what this board makes the developers do, is, is they have to prove that their project's going to work, and the board hires consultants to help them understand all these aspects, these technical aspects. And so, that, that's the process. It's, no one's taking anybody's word for anything.
As Mr. DePlacido has done in the past, proven himself. I'd like to see a track record from this developer before we let him do anything further in this town. I've lived on Secong Street since 1983. The Burtons lived beside us, and now the Cullens live beside us. Every single developer who has tried to develop this project has been denied, including a Norfolk son, David Pimental, who was denied from building on this parcel. I believe it was because it was too rugged and because of environmental concerns. I would just hope that because someone puts 40B or affordable in front of the name of something, it doesn't give them license to do it, you know, something of this magnitude with this impact that it will have on all of us as a town. It's just inconceivable to me that we're even here after the denials of the past. I don't think because someone gets a bargain price on a piece of land that they can go ahead and just add 200 cars a day to our street. Do you know what it's like trying to get to Medfield in the morning? We're backed up to the sledding hill in Medfield if you have to get out there between 8:00 and 9:00 o'clock. How are we supposed to get to work? I mean, I could go on and on. It just brings me to tears.
The peer reviewers, as well as this board, will take all that into account, trust me. We won't, everything will be reviewed, everything will be verified. There won't be any decision until this board is satisfied that this development, if it goes forward, is going to work with everything that you mentioned. Okay?
And again, thank you again for serving.
Mr. Chairman, on topic of the wetlands violations, Dan, could you allow me, this, that issue is also being looked at by the Conservation Commission here in Norfolk, is that accurate?
Yeah, that, that's a separate process. The, the commission is looking at whether there were any historic alterations of wetland areas on the project site, and that, that investigation is ongoing. It's pending before the Conservation Commission, because they have jurisdiction under the, under the State Wetlands Protection Act, as well as the Wetlands Bylaw. Again, that has nothing to do with this project, because that's, that's a jurisdictional issue that, that deals with past alterations, not something that's being proposed here, but that could be relevant, depending on what the commission finds, and if and when that finding happens, if that affects this project in any way, it'll come back, come before the board with some, some sort of report or presentation.
So, I, thank you, thank you, Dan. So, I think what you might want to do is get engaged with the Concom and, you know, go before them and express your concerns, because the, the wetlands violation issue is before them currently. So, everyone in this room who has a concern about this issue may want to focus their attention on the Concom, because as Dan said, we have handed it off to them. It's out of our jurisdiction now. We have nothing to do if there is or was or wasn't a wetlands violation. That's not our responsibility to make that decision. It's now been handed off to the Conservation Committee, Commission. And so, if, if you have concerns about that particular issue, they're best addressed to the Conservation Commission. But it's out of our hands at this point, just, I just want to make that clear with everyone.
Mr. Chairman, may I briefly?
Sure. And what topic?
Just in response to that line of discussion.
Sure.
So, I came into this hearing process absolutely intent on focusing on the merits of this proposal and expecting a thorough and fair review of this proposal, and not talking about the past. I just wanted to state that I disagree with Attorney Hill's characterization of the Conservation Commission's process, Mr. Kaliza's statement that this board does not have jurisdiction over local conservation-related issues, and just remind everyone that that issue is still the subject of active litigation. But I really hope that this process is focused on that proposal. There are plans that are in this proposal that delineate the wetlands. This board is going to hire a wetlands peer review expert, and it certainly has jurisdiction over the issue of wetlands, at least as far as the local bylaw is concerned. And I, I just wanted to state that in response briefly, that the development team in front of this board is absolutely focused on presenting the merits of the project and the impacts that this project will have on the town, and I think this board is going to do its best to review the impacts of the project on the town.
Thank you. Other questions from the public? Sure, grab a mic.
Yes. My name is Paul McDonough from Stop River Road.
What number, Paul?
Excuse me?
What number, street?
Six, Stop River. So, this question might be best directed to the engineers, but were they aware of any existing drainage or stormwater issues in the area when they did their evaluation?
Travis, you are, Chris?
So, we take into account the existing site conditions, which is the topography, which way the flow paths run, analyzing certain points, as analysis points that run off-site or go to certain areas on this site. In conjunction with that, we look at the map soils that's provided, along with soil testing that's done on-site. That is how our analysis is done for stormwater.
And were there any particular areas of concern?
Yeah, so we looked at behind some adjacent properties, so up on this plan here, up towards the top of the page, we had an analysis point that went in this direction. There's an amount of existing conditions that provides runoff in this general direction, gets through here. So, what we've done with our stormwater design is mitigate that. We brought a portion of that that used to go in that direction into our stormwater system, which is actually routed and infiltrated down here.
And what street would that be, off of Secong Street?
That would be off Stop River Road. Would be up in that corner.
Okay. And that's on the other end of Stop River, the farther end?
Yes.
Got it. Okay. So, on our end of Stop River, we do have some water issues, where water does run off the hill, because it's a higher elevation, and it comes down, and even in the wintertime, if you drive up the street, if there's enough, enough, let's say precipitation, you can see ice on the street that comes down, and it runs down driveways, and we have big blocks of ice on our street from the runoff and from the groundwater that's coming off the hill. So, you know, down lower, up where the roadway is perhaps, and maybe closer to where the other houses are, I think you need to look into some mitigation there as well.
So, what number, Secong specific, I'm sorry, which number, Stop, I'm having trouble with my road designations tonight, I apologize.
Six, eight, 10, that area with a, you have a higher elevation, and there's a hill that comes down, and the water, it's just like a funnel, it funnels down in to the Stop River area off the hill, so the higher elevation.
Six through 10?
Yep. I would say six through 10, because I've seen water come out from other people's property as well. But, you know, on, on a lot of rainy days, we'll have basically a little stream running down outside of our driveway. So, there's substantial drainage issues coming from that higher elevation down to Stop River.
Okay. Right. So, that is exactly the type of, of comment that is helpful for the development team, just kind of getting, we model the site based on an analysis of the watershed, but learning anecdotally what the actual drainage conditions are will help us focus in certain areas. What I will say, if, if any of that water that you're seeing on the road originates from uphill on this project site where some of the work is going to be done, 100% of the projects that I've been involved in, unless there has been an engineering mistake, have actually served to improve off-site drainage conditions, because what we're doing is, we're catching all that water that was ordinarily just falling on-site and draining away, and directing it to designed stormwater management facilities that are intended to catch and then slowly release that water. So, now, understanding that that's one of the areas of concern, you know, we can look at whether or not any of the existing stormwater runoff from just the property is actually impacting that, and then maybe adjust to account for it. But those are the types of comments that are helpful.
Okay. I had a couple of other questions. One of them was related to blasting. So, is, is this particular area that's going to be developed, obviously in our, on our land, we have a lot of ledge. I'm assuming there's a lot of ledge up there as well. And if there's going to be blasting, you know, the, the other homes in the area could be impacted, either through a cracked foundation, cracked pools. How do you guys deal with that? What's the type of remediation that you do? I asked that for a couple of my neighbors.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, can I respond?
Sure.
So, one of the comments that Mass Housing mentioned in their project eligibility letter, which is the initial stop for this project to go forward, was Mass Housing, was that the developer was to evaluate the conditions on-site, particularly with respect to concerns about ledge. A lot of the site testing that we did was with an eye towards evaluating the extent of ledge on-site, and we did discover that there is less ledge... And we did discover that there is less ledge on-site than we initially anticipated. There is still ledge on-site. There is ledge. There are large boulders, and blasting may be required as part of this project. I know that this board, in reviewing another project, made sure to put in comprehensive blasting conditions that were reasonable, but very comprehensive to ensure that any blasting that's done is done with appropriate safeguards in place. I know that no blasting company that operates at this moment in time, or very few, conduct blasting without visiting neighbors and getting the neighbors' permission, under certain circumstances, to videotape the condition of foundations, videotape the conditions of drywall, so that if there is an issue, or ask the owners to take pictures themselves of things they're concerned about, pre and post blasting. And they have insurance, and they're required to safeguard against those types of things. But blasting is something that's highly regulated in the state. We don't intend on, or we don't anticipate having to do as much of it as some people might suspect. But I know that this board has previously included comprehensive blasting conditions to address those types of concerns.
Part of the construction management plan, Paul, will be that there be a blasting plan in place, and pretty much, Chris elaborated on that.
Okay. And then, one of the comments that I would have is that, you know, a lot of us in the area do have finished basements where our walls are covered with some type of covering wood. That would be, you know, difficult to take down to inspect before something like that.
There'll be, there'll be a cop, it has to be approved and proven.
I'm going to yield the microphone for a minute, if I could, because one of the other gentlemen wanted to comment on that last question.
Michael Kozakowski, I'm from 24 Stop River. So, in the past, oh, boy, now I saw there, what was it, about five years, Old Cart Path? There was a development put in there. It was just three single-family homes. So, we basically have some experience, even though this is a very, three homes is much, much smaller than this. I can give you some experience about what that was like. They did have to, they did have to blast some ledge, and the only reason they did is because we had a neighbor that pursued that. What happens is, they send somebody to your home who does some visual inspection of your home, and they take pictures and things like that. When I talked to the gentleman who did it, he told me that under no circumstances will you be able to file a claim that will be paid. That's what he told me. It's impossible to prove that this site created damage to your home. That's what he told me. This was a professional. So, I know that there's regulations for it, but you'll be left high and dry if something happens, for sure. An aside question I have is, you know, living next to this construction site, it went on and on and on for five years. We could get nothing done through the developer. They left a big pile rotting logs right next to our property. It took a lot release meeting to get him to do something about it. The amount of noise, the amount of diesel fumes, really, my question is, is there any sort of regulation to tell a developer who is doing something like this that this has to be done in three years, it has to be done in two years, or, you know, will it continue for 10 or 15 years?
Part of the, part of this plan will be that they will submit a time schedule to the board of how long they think this project will take. But under, with regard to your other note, there will be a construction management plan put in place. Building permits, occupancy permits will all be tied to the making sure the developer does what this board requires them to do. So, logs on somebody's side property or something like that will not happen because this board will make sure that the building commissioner does not issue building permits or occupancy permits till those things are taken care of. And with regard to the blasting, the same thing, construction management plan will have a detailed blasting plan involved with it, and the same thing will go, will happen. It won't be that you won't get paid for it. Go make sure that that plan is in place and that it's appropriate.
Yeah. The other, just a, just a quick comment was, there was a very large tree in the neighborhood that fell after the blasting, and no one made the connection to the blasting whatsoever. And I don't think any amount of analysis can figure out if you have a tree, a tree that is ready to fall over from blasting or something like that. And many of the homes in this area have, you know, 40, 50-foot pine trees that could easily fall on their homes, so. But really, my main concern was the fact that, you know, to put in three homes, it took five years, and every time we asked for something to be done, we got nothing, nothing. You just take time out of your day to go fight something that never happens. So, if this goes on for 10 years, if you're near retirement age, you're going to spend your retirement age just living next to this construction site, so.
Thank you. Other concerns?
I just want to add one comment. We've done, I think, five or six 40B projects now, and the developers, and I think Mr. Hart will, will respect our requests to deal with issues like that. I mean, they are, the development that you're referring to, there was no leverage. We do have some leverage over making them tow the road, so to speak, in terms of getting things done and the timing. We could deny the project, you can, you know, and then we could tie them up in court for six or seven years. So, we do have a little leverage, and, but developers know that, so they do work with the board. And I expect Mr. Hart will work with us on those types of issues. But we've had, I think we're in number six now, 40B, and every developer that's come before us has been amenable and worked with us when we had requests, special requests.
I would suggest that 40B projects generally are subject to more oversight and more regulation, and that, you know, towns do have more control, at least as far as the construction phase of the project, than a three-lot subdivision. Three-lot subdivision, nobody has their eye on. But a 40B project has a lot of oversight.
Other questions?
I just have two final quick questions.
Okay.
One, what is the existing zoning? The existing zoning for the property is?
It's the R3 zoning district. Is that what you're referring to?
R3 is residential.
Residential.
Okay. Not farming or anything like that?
No.
Okay. And final question, regarding the water and the town's water supply, is there a process the applicant has to go through in order to hook up to the town's water system? And is that something that the town could, you know, require them to drill their own well?
They do have to, they won't be able to do a well, but they will have to, they will hook up to town water supply. They have done some initial testing with the DPW with regard to pressure and quantity. So, and again, the DPW will be providing us more feedback on that.
Okay. And could that affect the pressure that we have down the street as well, I assume?
I don't have the answer to that, but we'll certainly ask the DPW that.
Okay.
Okay.
Question on, I?
I'm going to let some of these other folks, I don't want to let them lose out. The woman here, right in front here with the blonde hair, there's two women with blonde hair, but the woman in front.
Hi, Anne Fletcher Meeting House Road. What's, oh, Anne Fletcher Meeting House Road. Is this project bonded? So, if anything happens, there would be recourse?
We'll, I'll let Chris speak to it.
Yeah, I, so, ultimately, this is going to be a subdivision. We are planning fee simple lots, and bonding to make sure that the infrastructure, once started, is completed, is not uncommon for a project like this. So, just to ensure that, you know, you don't have a half-constructed road or infrastructure sitting out there that's just rotting in time. But the nature of bonds in 40B projects is a little bit different, but the intent is the same. The intent is to ensure that, you know, it doesn't get half-built. One of the ways to secure the construction is with pledges of the lot, so that the land actually becomes security for the completion of it, and the town, you know, would step into ownership if something went wrong. So, there are many different ways to do it, but I would anticipate some element of bonding as a condition of the permit.
We've not waived bonding on a project yet, so there will be bonding. Okay. I think, Ms. Sweeney?
Yep. What?
Lorraine Sweeney, 14 Stop River Road. I just have a quick question on the layout. Between Townhouse Unit 15, 16, and Unit 17, 18 on the plan, it shows the road extending onto Number 10, Old Cart Path. Why is it shown that way?
Travis?
Yeah, that road ends, that road ends on our property line. It does not extend on adjacent property. So, all work that is shown on this plan is on this subject locust property.
And 10, Old Cart Path, is like a five-and-three-quarter acre lot. Although there's a house that was recently constructed there, it would be possible to put an access roadway through to Old Cart Path, conceivably, would it not?
So, you're not referring to the three-lot subdivision? You're referring to a different property?
I am referring to the three-lot subdivision. Number 10, Old Cart Path, it's closer to Stop River. It's opposite Number 12. 12 has those 15 units. At the backyard of 12, Old Cart Path, there are 15 buildings, or maybe it's 15 units. And then, you go further down towards Stop River, and that's where I'm referring, Number 10, Old Cart Path.
Yeah, so, we don't have control over that property. I think the intent of the double-barrel roadway was to alleviate any concerns about the single access. I've had success on other projects in permitting the double-barrel roadway as a mitigation measure to ensure safe vehicular access. So, that was the intent there. And where we don't have the right to pass over that road, and frankly, it would likely meet with resistance as well, it wasn't the intent of the developer to do that. There are also other issues, restrictions within old subdivisions, rights under the subdivision control law that would likely prevent access, but it's not the intent to do that. And I think the configuration of the double-barrel entrances is the methodology that we're proposing to make access to the site safe.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that there would never be a continuation of that access road onto Number 10, Old Cart Path.
Oh, okay. I think that would be a condition that we'd be happy to probably agree to, you know, no future access, if that's the concern for potential future development. It wasn't necessarily our intent to access over there, it's just we did have to move some units around because of the drainage, and there was some good upland in that area. So, we configured a road to access some units over there. But it wasn't the intent to extend to a future subdivision, and I don't think that that, what would be considered a driveway, would be sufficient access to a future subdivision anyway. So, I think that, if that's a concern, then that'd be a condition we wouldn't mind accepting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next question. Go ahead, Mr. Carpenter.
Hi, I'm Dr. Carpenter from 120 Secoak Street. Obviously, I'm right on the edge of this. My big question has to do with sewage disposal. As we all know, the backside of this property is very low. There is wetlands down in there, and I'm of the opinion, or I've heard, that they're going to have some sort of sewage disposal plant of their own down there. I am very concerned with the weather we've had this past couple of weeks. If the power fails and that sewage disposal plant fails, what is going to happen? Are we going to have a massive problem down there? Is it going to smell so bad that nobody can live on Secoak Street? We've got enough problems on Secoak Street as it is. We've got two hedonistic individuals within a quarter mile of each other who care more about themselves than about the neighborhood, and I am real concerned that this is going to be a big problem if, push comes to shove, we have some problems here. And I want to know that if they do have a sewage plant down there, that there is some sort of control, and if it goes bad, that they're going to have to clean it up, not the town of Norwood, Norfolk.
Chris, do you want to?
Sure. And I think the board's peer review engineer, Sean Reardon, has a lot of experience with wastewater treatment plants and could probably, you know, and will give the board and abutters some assurance regarding the permitting process for wastewater treatment plants. It is a state-regulated permitting process, the groundwater discharge permit process associated with a wastewater treatment plant. And I can say from recent experience that their process has only gotten more rigorous in recent years, to even get to the point where you're allowed to apply for a wastewater treatment plant, groundwater discharge permit. But all of the concerns that were mentioned are addressed through that process in terms of backup generators to ensure that pumps are running in the event of a power outage, extensive hydrogeologic modeling of the entire property and adjacent properties, extensive soil testing to support that hydrogeologic modeling. And those systems are, I mean, they are more reliable than traditional Title V systems because the water that's leaving the wastewater treatment plant is to drinking water standards. And then, beyond that, it goes into a highly engineered leaching field that continues to treat the water as it percolates through the soil. So, I think, you know, in some respects, a wastewater treatment plant, although you're dealing with a large amount of effluent just because of the size of the project, it's a very reliable means of disposing of sewage on-site. Title V works as well, you know, smaller projects, if you did have individual septic systems, you know, on a smaller development, not at the 96-unit level, that's manageable. But at a 96-unit level with the gallons per day that a project like this generates, the wastewater treatment plant is consistently a very safe alternative. And we'll get into that in detail. We won't get to the point where we're actually going through the state permitting process here, but if any red flags pop up that the board's peer review engineer or our engineering team would identify that might indicate that a hydrogeologic evaluation of the site would not result in a groundwater discharge permit, then that's something we would, we would probably investigate further, because we don't want to permit a project that's not going to get approval anyway. So, we are at the point where we've done sufficient soil evaluation to know that we can infiltrate into the septic system, sorry, into the leaching fields that are proposed. But again, it's a comprehensive process that we'll definitely be speaking about more during the hearing.
Will the, will the builder and the attorney put a bond up that if it fails, they will pay for it?
So, actually, part of the state permitting process does require additional funding and a means to fund and potentially lean properties if proper maintenance is done. It's, you know, we can have Sean Reardon talk about it more, Andrews can talk about it more, but yes, there is funding that is provided to ensure that you can't walk away from a system like that.
Or if you have skeptical?
Skepticism is what makes these projects great, because we vet all of these issues.
We'll review that with the peer reviewers when we get to.
Sure. But just to point out, you know, where that is the field, we haven't located the actual plant yet on the plan. We have a few potential areas where we're going to put the buildings themselves.
Such as?
You know, there's some green space here, you know, additional space in here. But this is the first thing Sean's going to say, because I've been involved in his projects before. He's going to say, where are you citing the building? Which, you know, the first step is to cite where the effluent's going to go. So, it's there, and then there's another farther down, just below there. But we will discuss that at length.
We will. Next question. Go ahead. Just, you had a question. Go ahead, grab a mic.
Larry Clark.
Oh, you're over there. Okay, go ahead.
Larry Clark, 130 Secoak Street.
We'll let Larry go first, and we'll bring it back, Chris, okay?
Concerning the traffic, and, you know, I know there'll be a traffic study after, you know, for the traffic after the development is put in. But does this board have any authority to control the construction traffic? According to the engineer, there's quite a bit of fill coming out of there, which, you know, I don't know how many trucks that amounts to, double that, because a truck comes in and goes out. Would this board have any authority to control the amount of trucking that comes in and out of there in a day, the timeframe? Will this be, this trucking of this fill be throughout the whole project, or will it just be initially? Those are concerned because it's going to, before this developer even gets moved into, the amount of truck traffic that's coming out of there is going to be phenomenal with the amount of fill that's coming out of there.
We will. Part of the construction management plan will address that. I think as all of us are feeling these last couple of weeks, with Secoak Street being shut down sometimes, and then Cleveland Street being shut down to be paved, the traffic is extremely heavy on both Secoak and Cleveland right now. So, that will become part of the construction management plan. Truck traffic, hours of operation, that will all be addressed during the construction management plan. Good question. Okay, go ahead. Can we get a mic? Can we get a mic over to the right side?
Do you mind if I ask a question? Karen Clark.
She yielding to you?
Yes.
Okay.
Karen Clark, 130 Seccong Street. I don't know if this is something the board can answer, if Mr. Hill can answer, but early on in this project, there was wetland research done by a gentleman by the name of Patrick Garner, who was hired by the town, and I guess my question is, is the issues that were discovered during that evaluation by Mr. Garner, is that something that the Conservation Commission will have meetings about, or is that something that the neighborhood, the neighbors, the abutters, have to ask the Conservation Committee to evaluate?
Dan?
So there is a ongoing investigation by the Conservation Commission as to alleged or potential alterations of certain wetland areas on the project site that was done prior to this filing of this application, and that's a process that's underway. And the Commission hired a wetland scientist to review, go out to the site and look at these areas, and so that process is underway. But there's other processes that are applicable to this project, so this project is going to require a wetlands permit that's called an order of conditions by the Conservation Commission under the State Wetlands Protection Act. At some point, they're going to have to apply for that. It could be after this board has issued its decision, it could be in the middle of it, it's not up to us to decide when they apply. This board is also stepping into the shoes of the Conservation Commission for purposes of the local bylaw. So we have a local wetlands bylaw that's separate from the state act, and so this board, among other things, is going to be looking at whether, you know, how this project complies or doesn't comply with the requirements, performance standards in the local bylaw, in the local regulations. And I did note that one of the waivers that's being requested by the developer is a waiver from the local bylaw. So one of the things the board's wetlands consultant is going to look at is whether this project would comply with the performance standards anyway, and whether the project presents any water quality concerns that are protected by the bylaw, and give advice to the zoning board along those lines. So there's really multiple layers of authority. I think your question was more specific to the investigation, but I just want to make sure the whole picture is clear, that there's various levels of looking at wetland issues on the site.
Okay, thank you. And one last question. One of the waivers the applicant is requesting is to mark all trees four inches in diameter, propose for removal, and show on a plan. At the last meeting, it was asked if it would basically be clearcutting of 21 acres, and the applicant confirmed that it would essentially be clearcutting of 21 acres. Yes, okay. Is it possible for the applicant to mark and then show on a plan any trees proposed to be saved? Since it sounds like it's not too many trees that will be saved, I'm not sure if it's an inconvenience for the applicant.
No, I think we can, again, we don't have to waive the entire bylaw, so we can put that provision in there. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
And there are also, there are also wetland areas on the site that aren't shown on this plan. This plan is a little deceptive, because there's a wetland in the middle, where those trees are is actually a wetland. So those aren't actual trees, but there are presumably trees in the wetland area. They won't be allowed to take those down, so it actually won't be clear cut, just so you understand, it's not, the whole site's not being clear cut. They can take down trees that are necessary to build the houses and the road, but they can't actually take down vegetation within the wetland areas unless they ask for permission to do so, and I don't think they're going to do that.
Hi, good evening. My name is Deborah Gersha. I live at 144 Seccong Street, directly across from the proposed project. The street address from the proposed project is 144 Seccong Street, my address is 143. So my husband and I have lived there since 2013, and as the other gentleman was saying, Norfolk's a beautiful bucolic town to basically rise up to starting living in Randolph when we first moved to Commonwealth of Mass. So this is definitely a change, as Ms. Miguelway was saying, it's totally different flavor from the neighborhood that currently exists. So when you look at those two teardrop pieces of diagram that are there, those are detention basins. Our house is directly across the street from those detention basins. And one of the things I'm thinking about is, I used to work for FEMA as a temp employee, and during the summer of 2009, Norfolk County was actually disaster area because of the amount of flooding that occurred. We had very heavy rains between Rhode Island and Massachusetts. We had so much damage that we actually qualified for disaster relief for Norfolk County. So I'm really concerned in terms of the detention basins, that they might potentially fail, and then we're going to have water cascading across Seccong Street, and potentially sewage going across Seccong Street. Right now, on the property next to the Miguelways, where Mary has her horse farm, we actually have to call the DPW during the winter time, because as this gentleman was saying, we have ice buildup currently on Seccong Street, and that's with having a virgin piece of land across the street from our house right now. We have basically, that property's approximately 30 acres, and it actually holds back a tremendous amount of water at this time. But the neighbors, Miguelways, myself, another neighbor, we all saw Mr. O'Hart excavating the land during the summer 2017. There's sandy soil at the beginning of the property. It doesn't take a soil scientist to tell you that that sandy soil cannot hold back a good amount of water to prevent water from cascading down Seccong Street. So the other thing I ask of the board is, you know, we have the Lakeland Farms development that's going in, it's going in pretty soon, I know people start putting deposits on, there's going to be at least two adults with cars that are moving into each of those properties. So what I'm requesting from the board is, if we can figure out how many people from Lakeland Farms are moving into those properties down the street from us, because you really need to add both that development and Mr. O'Hart's planned development at 144 Seccong Street as a total to figure out how many cars are going to be being dumped on Seccong Street. But when you look where Cleveland Street dumps into Seccong Street, these cars, the traffic from both sets of cars and both developments are only going to be a matter of feet from each other. So we're talking about a whole development up Cleveland Street, a whole development on Seccong Street, adding both sets of cars together. It's going to be a tremendous amount of cars that never existed along Seccong Street before. So please add the two developments together when you're doing your traffic study.
And you forgot the enclave off of Village Green, which we'll also add into, too. So yes, all those will have to be added to evaluate it. Okay, next question?
Hi, my name's Levana Delacamera. I live at 134 Seccong Street, which is the highest point in Norfolk. My husband and I, we live there, and we are directly abutting this upcoming project. And I have a couple of concerns. We have an artesian well that is 325 feet deep, and I'm really concerned about the upcoming construction and, you know, the explosions that are going to be taking place to go through the ledge and so forth. We could lose water. I mean, our well is so deep, and you don't know what's going to happen in terms of the, you know, reverb from these activities on this land, and how do we mitigate that? When we run out of water, what's the recourse? How do we say, you guys caused the problem? Because we've had, we've had no problems for 22 years since we've lived in this town. So it's going to be a problem saying, you guys caused this problem, you know, caused the problem, and what's in the, what's in the plan to protect the abutters such as ourselves? That's one. Second of all, as we have an artesian well, and there, there's an, you know, the proposal for the sewage system being contained on this property, it's wetlands, the potential for failure is there, no matter how well something is engineered. It's going to fail. It's the laws of entropy. So if it fails, and even if it doesn't fail, you're dealing with leaching fields, it gets into the well water, and it affects us again. So this is a huge concern for us. So I'd just like to put it out there as something to consider for the abutters, not just for us, because there's many people around us that have wells. So I thank you for that.
Again, during the civil engineering review, we will tackle all those, especially with regard to the wastewater treatment plan, but thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. question on that was, is that, you know, a concern like that, where the, if they have a drinking, I understand as a drinking water well?
Yes.
In a case like that, could the board potentially bond connection, if it were to be essentially destroyed by blasting, could the board bond connection to town water in that case?
Dan, do you want to take a snap at that?
I think so. I think, we've done similar kind of conditions in the past in other projects in other towns. I'd have to know more about the situation. I am ashamed to admit, I didn't even realize we had wells over here, I thought this was public water. Is everyone in Seccong on wells?
Yes.
No.
Okay. All right, so that's one of the issues that the board, board's consultants would look at, is the hydrological impacts of the stormwater system and the sewage leaching fields on your wells. They've put their leaching field in a location strategically, so the groundwater in that location more likely than not moves away from Seccong Street, given the contours. I'm not an expert at this, but I just, usually groundwater moves in the same direction as the contours on the surface, and so they've, they're probably thinking that they're not going to impact your wells with their leaching field. But is there bedrock, is there bedrock in this area?
Yes.
Okay, so that could change things. Bedrock, water moves in different directions in bedrock, not necessarily along the contours of surface. So that's something that the board would want to definitely take a hard look at as part of its review. In terms of the question about bonding, there's a lot of ways to handle this. I mean, we could, you know, we could put conditions on there that if someone's well is impacted either through blasting or by pollution, that there be some kind of replacement well that the developer would have to pay for to drill deeper perhaps into the ground. I don't even know if connection to town water is even viable. Is there a town water main anywhere near here?
Yeah.
Okay, so that might be, I mean, the board could potentially impose a condition requiring the project to connect to town water, the project itself, or to connect neighbors to town water if there's an impact. Actually, you are connected to town water, right? Okay, so there is going to be a connection, so perhaps a condition would be that the extension also provide for stubs at each frontage property, that could be, we've done that before in other towns.
Go ahead. I'll let the same woman who was talking, just to continue. Okay, thank you, Karen. Just let her finish up, where's she?
Okay, given the comment regarding the potential of tying into the town water, is there any, you know, where we live, we, again, we live at the highest point in Norfolk, we have a very long, very steep driveway, and the potential of tying into town water or even town gas in the future is a monumental task because of where our house is situated. You know, my concern is, even if the, you know, there are constraints, or rather, there's a mitigation to have, you know, abutters tie into the town water, we live so far back, it's going to be a very expensive endeavor for the town, and even for the contractor. And, you know, I just want to put it out there that the potential is going to be huge, especially for us, that, you know, we're 500, our driveway's 600 feet long, and we're very high up. In fact, if you look at the plan, that blue square, that's our house. So, you know, there's a concern here.
Okay, thank you. Karen, I guess was...
I was just going to mention, there was a moratorium placed on Seccong Street when the water was first run down, and you had X amount of time to, you know, tie into it, and if you didn't tie in that period of time, you weren't allowed to.
Was there, was there a reason why, Karen? Do you have the mic in front of you?
They were paving the street.
It's because they were paving the street.
Okay.
So they gave the homeowners, you know, an extended period of time to tie in, but once the street was paved, you had no right, yeah, I'm sure in the case of catastrophic kind of conditions, they would have allowed it, but there was a moratorium placed on it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
George McLaughlin, 16 Stop River Road. Could you tell us what the, what your estimated length of construction is, and is that length of construction contingent at all upon you selling these units?
Right, so it's always subject to market conditions. The answer is, we can't predict the future in terms of market conditions, but what we can do, and what we will do, is submit a phasing plan so that, you know, you don't have the entire site. I mean, the roadway may be put in in one fell swoop, but you wouldn't have some houses here, some houses there necessarily. There would be a logical phasing to it, but as far as the duration of construction, it would be like any other subdivision, once the lots are created, it's a build of a lot. You know, you have a lot that someone could build a house on at some point. Unless the standard is abandonment, if the project is abandoned, and abandonment carries with it some element of intent, then that would be a circumstance where the permit would be revocable by the board. But it's generally unenforceable to put an outside deadline on the completion of construction, because that makes, you know, financing difficult when the bank doesn't have certainty that the project is going to be around. It's one of those conditions that is a tough one to enforce. But generally, you know, the bonding element for the infrastructure and the phasing address those types of concerns.
Chris, do you have a build-out idea yet, what it's going to be? What's your current build-out plan? Do you have one?
No, we haven't, we haven't done a phasing plan, but we have notes for that. So I think that's something, I mean, can we get a phasing plan to Sean as he's doing his work? Yeah, I think we could get a preliminary phasing plan.
Okay, good. Okay, any other questions? Go ahead, grab a mic.
She told me 179 Seccong, how come they just can't build like 30 of these units, you know? Make it easy on everyone.
Come on up here and sit with us, yeah.
Make it easy on everyone. That's all.
Yeah, thank you. All right. We, we, do you have a question, sir? No. You know, we encourage you, we thank you for your comments, and obviously, we hope that you continue to come. I know it's sometimes monotonous, and it's not always a lot of fun, but we really do need the public input on every area as we review them. You know, when we get to traffic, you folks know a lot about what's going on in that street, that the traffic reviewers don't know, that this board doesn't know. Same thing with the other aspects. So we ask you to continue to come and join in at these hearings, we do need your input. Okay? At this time, I think we want to discuss some of the peer reviewers that we're going to be choosing. I think for the wetland peer review and for landscape and architecture, the bids we have is from Beta Group. So unless anybody has any concerns with using Beta Group for the wetland peer review, I think that came in at $9820, $9,820, and the landscape architect was $9,850, and both those were from Beta.
So I think we'd like to see just the scope of the proposed review.
Have you seen, you haven't seen?
I haven't seen the bids yet.
Okay.
As far as the qualifications of Beta, we have no problem with Beta. It's just, you know, any qualified organization generally that, you know, you get the sort of one-off experts that just go wandering around that can sometimes be problematic for peer review, but the Beta's acceptable, it's just generally, we'd like to take a look at the scope, because obviously, some statements made with respect to wetlands, we've submitted some wetlands plans to the board and, you know, to confirm the negative determination that was made at the Conservation Commission, so there is some work there. But what was Tetra Tech's peer review cost at the Concom?
It was $4,300.
Yeah, so I just, I'd like to see the scope so I understand why... Yeah. So I just, I'd like to see the scope so I understand why.
It's, I think, I think Christmas spoke it's not. The landscape architecture was $2,800.
No, I said combined. I said land.
Oh, okay.
I combined. What are you looking at?
So, yeah, the Beta's, Beta gave us a proposal for...
Traffic, landscape.
Yeah, four things, or three things. And so we're talking about just pulling out landscape, architecture, and architecture. So landscape architecture was $2,800, architecture was $3,400. But that doesn't include meetings, and so that would be...
Right. So I included the meetings and everything in the Beta.
What I heard was $9,800?
And $20 for...
The wetlands.
For wetlands.
Okay. So that, that gave me a little bit of sticker shock relative to, again, Tetra Tech's peer review cost during the ANRAD process was $4,500.
But that was a review of wetland delineation. That's a lot different from reviewing impacts on a project. That's not, that's looking at flags and determining whether those flags are in the right location. This is essentially an NOI under the local bylaw.
Well, I, I don't think that should be the scope of review at this point. We haven't applied for a notice of intent.
You've asked for a waiver, a blanket waiver from the entire bylaw. So the board has to understand what the impacts of the project are on the, on the local bylaw interests. It's, I don't think that's unreasonable at all.
Yeah. No, I mean, I just, I'd like to see how that stacks up against comparable reviews for other projects. It just seems a little steep to me at first, at first glance.
My only concern is obviously, we don't approve these tonight. It's going to delay the process.
Yeah. May I take a quick look at the bid?
Sure.
I just want to see if it comes in phases and... So there's a water line in Seekonk? It's just that the folks aren't tied to it?
Yeah, they're just not tied into it. A lot of people in that area, the town, never tied into the town water, their wells.
It was brought into developments further up the road.
It was brought into the development that was further up the road.
It goes all the way up Noon Hill, too. It's just...
Right. It was brought in for new development. The existing houses from you has gone by.
Dan, sorry, do you have the, what was the other one? Architecture and...
Yeah, they just never tied in.
I think in terms of hydrology, I mean, I didn't know there was all these wells here. I mean, this is kind of the same issue as Abbeville.
I was thinking Neil Price already.
Yeah. And I think we need a plan showing at least where all the private wells are within 400 feet of the leaching fields. That's what Neil wanted for back in Abbeville, so...
Right.
There's also the concern about blasting on this site. One of my questions was...
Especially with bedrock wells, that's going to be...
Oh, did you have a question?
You know what I was going to ask?
You have to grab a mic.
Oh, I just wanted to know when the next meeting will be, the next hearing that we could come to...
We haven't decided yet. We're probably looking at the middle of August, somewhere around the 21st. Or September, actually. It's going to actually be September 4th, I think.
Can you send out notifications?
Yes. The zoning, the zoning office should be sending out notifications to all butters.
Isn't that already happened?
But for the following meetings, for follow-up meetings.
No, not, no, not for each meeting.
She puts them on the website, though.
Oh, she puts them on...
Yeah, it'll be on the website. You can see when the meetings are being held.
It's on the town website, but...
She won't send you a direct email, but she'll put it on the town website.
Okay, I just...
Go to the site that she pulled up earlier. There's an actual tab, I think, at the top that just says calendar. If you just click on that, it has a list of town meetings. It's usually based on which ones are coming up sooner. And then if you just click on the meeting itself, it'll show you the whole agenda. So they'll, yeah.
And you can actually, you can also subscribe to, to get notifications of meetings by email. So if you go to that calendar.
And you can always, as a last resort, you can just call, right, the zoning secretary and say, when is the next meeting for?
So you think it's going to be December?
Beginning of September. And if all that else fails, we'll give you Don's personal phone number, and you can call him.
So, Mr. Chairman, first on the wetlands, it just, there's one element here that I just want to confirm whether or not it's duplicative. So there's a sub, there's a subsection for stormwater management that they're going to review, the stormwater management regulations and standards. I thought that was incorporated in, I'm sorry, in Sean Riordan's review?
Can I see that?
Yeah. And I understand that, you know, the stormwater management, compliance with the stormwater management regulations are ultimately going to be under the jurisdiction of the CONCOM, because we have to file a notice of intent for this project. So I just, with that accepted, just understanding the scope, the other question is generally, you know, you might have a per fee cost for travel and attendance at meetings, but otherwise, these engagements are usually done with a budget, but on a time and expense basis. And you review the amount of time that goes into the project. And, you know, what the, what the actual effort was that was expended by the expert. So I think maybe if we could just clarify how much of this is stormwater management that Sean is already reviewing, that would be helpful.
Okay. I'm going to ask you for another month extension, though.
Huh. Well, frankly, if, I don't think that's a, I don't think that's a big deal.
It isn't, but I got to get you, I got to, I got to hold another meeting in order to approve it. So I'm going to be delayed a month before I can have them start working.
On wetlands. And I don't...
Have you got no problem with that?
Does the board have a meeting in the interim between, you could take two seconds to approve an expert at some time between now and the next meeting?
It's at the end, it's, the next would be on the 7th, top of August. So we have, with the next week, we do. Oh, we'd have to review it with you as well, so you have to get back to us.
No, I think, the simple question would be, if there's duplicative work here, to assign a number to the effort involved for stormwater management review of the stormwater management regs.
Okay.
Take that out, and then I think...
It's $1. Okay, there. How's that? I'll take off $1. All right. So you'll give us authority to ask them to put a number of that, reduce it from that, and then we can approve it from there?
Just confirm it's not...
Sounds fair.
Okay.
All right. So that will be with regard to the stormwater.
Then, so that's the Beta wetlands expert.
How about landscaping and architecture? Did you have any...
Yeah. So at this point, we haven't submitted detailed landscaping plans and architect, well, we submitted the architectural. So I think the architectural review, now, the $3,400 for architectural review, I assume that line item would include a meeting?
Is that Glenn?
That's Glenn. Yeah.
Okay. I'm just curious how the meetings break down. Is it one meeting for each of them?
Probably multiple meetings.
Yeah. It usually takes more than a few.
Are you okay on, traffic seems in line.
No, we're not going to be using them for traffic. We're pulling out traffic.
Oh.
So you're just looking at Beta for architecture and landscape, and meetings and direct expense.
Those seem in line.
That's fine. It's going to cost him more for you to review it than it is to do the whole thing.
I am inexpensive, Mr. Chairman. Please.
For, for the traffic review, we're actually looking at TEPP LLC, who came in actually cheaper than Beta for the traffic review. Would you like to see, Dan, you're going to...
Yeah, this is, let's see here.
And only because the fellow we worked with at Beta had left them and gone to a New Hampshire firm. And so we decided we'd switch gears with this and go with a different firm. That's the only reason we're not using Beta.
We actually tried to get, what was the name? Chris? No, Chris. What was it? Jason? We tried to get Jason to work on this.
Yeah, but he was up in a different world.
Were there any other bids received on traffic? Just curious.
Um, Beta and TEPP.
Oh, so the Beta bid, right.
Yeah. Chris, just so you know, I did solicit bids from Stantec, Gary Hibbert. We tried to get Jason to give a bid. He didn't want to give a bid. So...
This, so this one is hourly, it seems?
Yeah. Well, they have a, if you notice, it's a per review. So they, it's $3,900. So if there's multiple traffic studies, it's going to become more expensive, I think, if the clock keeps ticking.
You know, it's, okay. Okay. The only thing I ask you, if there are interim invoices that are sent, if we could just please be copied concurrently with those invoices, I think as soon as you get them, if you could just forward them to us as they get paid. So are you asking for a deposit on these tonight, or just to set a deposit number?
You can, you can give us a deposit, sure. Yeah. We'll approve them. And then if you want to get the deposit, as you did with the civil, to Amy. Yeah, yeah.
You have cash right now? No? Okay. All right.
Okay.
So with the clarification on the wetlands, stormwater management, oops, sorry. I think we're okay.
So could I get a, could I get a motion to approve, I think I can approve all of it at one time, correct, Dan? I don't have to do each one separately. Could I get a motion to approve TEPP LLC to do the traffic study for $3,900 per traffic study? A same motion for Beta to do the landscape and architecture at a cost of $9,850. And for Beta to do the wetland peer review for a figure somewhat less than $9,820, probably $9,819 for the wetland review.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we will, I'll make sure we, the clarification, and we'll let you know what that is. Okay.
Can you let me know Betsy a total?
Amy will be back in. Betsy's, Amy was sick tonight, so Betsy's agreed to...
Sure. Amy happens to be absent tomorrow.
And Mr. Chairman, probably smart just to put it out there that, that we may need to have a hydro geological peer review at some point, given what we've heard tonight about the wells and, you know, the subject system. And that, we've done that in the past with other projects. So just to...
This became a concern at Abbeville as well, with the number of wells that abutted the site. And we may have to do the same thing here. I think we used, at Abbeville, we used Neil Price, who did a very good job, so...
Right. So I think it's always a function of what we submit. I think tonight, we have identified a local concern in terms of wells that may be proximate to the site. So I think understanding at a basic level what the perceived topography and hydrogeologic conditions are, as far as Dan indicated groundwater flow, you know, there's potentially, the bedrock that we're discussing might actually create or bifurcate into areas of, of water that we're concerned about. So those types of things, I think if we take a look back at what information we have and what we can get, and then submit it, then the board would price out reviewing that. I think there's this balance, and I'm sure Dan can explain the dynamic, about, you know, independent investigations that the board wants to undertake versus information that we submit to the board. If the board says, we have insufficient information on this, we want you to submit X, Y, and Z, then maybe Sean could recommend a scope there for what we would submit. And then if we submit it in response to Sean's comments, then from there, we would build a scope. I, I think, it's been a long day for me, so I apologize. I think I'm rambling at this point.
I hope you don't get paid by the word, because man.
What I'm trying to say is...
Who gets paid by the word?
What I'm trying to say is, Dan makes a, Dan makes a valid point, that I think there may be at least some preliminary information that might require some hydrogeology.
We'll work with Sean on that. And I think Sean was unaware that there's wells up there too. So we'll make sure he knows that.
And actually, if I could make a suggestion, at some point, you're going to have to do some real analysis here for your groundwater discharge permit. And I don't know if that's started. But, I mean, do you have a hydro geological engineer that's begun working on the plant?
No. So, again, we've, we've looked at the soils preliminarily. We have a sense of the dynamics as far as depth of bedrock, what the mounding would look like. But we haven't done a full, what would be submitted as a hydrogeologic evaluation in advance of a wastewater. Essentially, the DEP has front-loaded the process now.
Right.
So that's essentially designing the whole project. We wouldn't, designing the whole wastewater treatment plant. We wouldn't anticipate doing that at a preliminary phase, where we don't know whether we have a permit yet. But if there are basic questions that need to be answered, you know, how far away are the wells? What are the soils like between the wells and the proposed location of the discharge? I think, the answer is, I think Sean should speak to that preliminarily, and he's entirely qualified to do so. And I think that's general civil. But to the extent Sean says, hey, wait a second, you know, we want to see X, Y, and Z, then, more words, Mr. Chairman. But I think it's important just to make the distinction.
So just for the board's edification, there's a process that, it's a state permitting process for the wastewater treatment plant. The first step is that the developer files what's called a scope of work for a hydro geological study. So they have to hire an engineer, typically a specialist in hydrology, and propose a scope of the study that they're going to do to show DEP that this treatment plant is permissible. And that scope of the study is sort of the same kind of scope as what we'd be interested in knowing. Like, so it's the impacts of the treatment plant on wells, down gradient receptors, the stream, the wetlands. So at some point, they're going to have to do this anyway for the state. It might make sense to have them, or ask that they start this process now, so we can get the benefit of their study, and then have that study looked at by somebody that we hire. And Chris's suggestion that Sean provide input is totally reasonable. I think we did that again at, at Abbeville, and had eventually hired a different firm to review the hydrogeological information that was provided. That developer hired Stephen Smith, GeoHydrocycle. He produced a report. And that would include basic information like the groundwater contours. So if you have that now, or if that's something you can produce, you know, that's basic. That, depth of groundwater, depth of the bedrock, you know, at least that minimal information would be very helpful for our board to start digesting and seeing if there's going to be impacts.
We have actually spoken to Mr. Smith and another gentleman about 12 months ago, but we were just waiting until we got into the process a little more and narrowed down a rough design. So we have spoken to Stephen Smith.
Okay. Good. Chris, do you have anything else? It's time before we pick our, the schedule for the next meeting?
I think that makes sense.
Okay. Dan is not available on the 21st, but he is available on September 4th. Are you all available on September 4th? It's going to be, it's a, it's a packed night. We do have Abbeville, but we don't know if they're going to be presenting. But we don't want to, I don't want to really delay till September 18th, if we can avoid it.
And we're going to concentrate on the engineer.
Concentrate on the engineer.
So that's the Wednesday after Labor Day.
Correct.
That would work.
That works.
Have you received any initial feedback from Sean, not about just the plans, but his schedule, and, you know, when he might be able to look at them? Because what we were...
He told me he would be avail, he would be ready by the end of August with his review, if that's, I think that's your question?
Okay.
So, yes. So that's why I said September 4th.
Yep.
Okay. And does every, does that work for the members of the board?
And the board, just before you adjourn, just, you're going to briefly discuss on the 7th, the issue of Beta. That's what, just to, for procedural purposes, you're going to have that on the agenda, just as a quick five-minute confirmation. Excellent.
And I'll get a revised quote from Beta, taking that stormwater issue out. We'll give that to the applicant and go from there.
So we will. All right. So could I have a motion to continue the public hearing for Lakeland Hills 40B until September 4th, 2019, at 7:15 PM?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion?
Quick discussion.
Yes.
Can we schedule a sit walk potentially? I personally haven't been on the site. I know some board members have.
To this site?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Do you want it, can we do that at the September 4th meeting? Or did you want to try to do it in between now and September 4th?
Doesn't matter to me. I always think it's good to do it faster, personally.
If Devin would like, I can meet any of the board members that would like to meet up there any Saturday or Sunday or a time that's convenient. It's not a problem.
That would work for me.
I just need 24 hours' notice.
Okay. Why don't we, why don't we get back to you? Because obviously, we'll have to post it. Make sure that we identify it.
If there's a quorum. But I think if an individual member wanted to walk...
If there's only one. But I don't think, Don, have you walked it at all yet, or?
Sure have.
You walked it, okay.
I've walked it.
You walked it.
I'd like to go back again.
Okay.
I would go back.
So probably do have a quorum, but...
It's been two years, I think.
I'll have Amy individually ask what the best Saturday or Sunday is, and then we'll schedule something with you. Try to do it between now and...
Or even October 6th is better.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So we will schedule that. I'll just have Amy sort of determine who wants to go, what Saturday or Sunday in the next couple of weeks prior to this meeting. Okay?
And do we need to include in our motion, our discussion on August 7?
We can do a separate motion for that, if you'd like. But we can include it as I can, I will re, I will ask Mike to redo the motion that to continue the public hearing till September 4th at 7:15, but all... 4th at 7:15, but also that the board on August 7th take up the Beta wetland peer review and remove the stormwater analysis part from that proposal.
Aye.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Anything?
No.
Okay.
So what are we voting on? The amended motion first?
The amended motion.
Okay.
Because... All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So you want me here September 4th?
Yes. You can come every other meeting, too, as well, if you'd like.
We might help you, right?
All right. Thank... No, because we amended the motion. Okay? Thank you. All right. We've got a couple of minutes to review, and then we can get out of here. Thank you very much. You're tough.
The pay is great.
Joe, can you sign that?
Yeah.
What are we doing first?
May, June. If everybody take a minute to look at the May 22nd meeting minutes, and then we'll...
May 22nd, is that? Yeah. Yeah. Well, I guess he can't, but he must have been here for that decision. But we don't need them any signatures. We have enough signatures. And look, Chris Handel.
Lucky Luciano.
If we didn't take our course today, we could have got out of this whole thing. Did you take your course? Maybe online course? Oh, he did it. He's just busted. He did it. This meeting is illegal. This whole year, we must have started off.
I did it.
All right, bye, guys.
Thanks, Dan. Did everybody have a chance to review the May 22nd?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of June 5th, 2019.
Oh, you made the wrong ones.
May 22nd, 2019. I was making the right one. The right one, but I made the motion for the wrong one.
Second.
Okay, the only concern is that in the 1, 2, 3rd paragraph down, the last sentence, it says it was agreed... It was said Lawrence Street as why the next, I think it was Karen McCabe, Lawrence Street as why. I think it's supposed to be asked why. That was a quiz. You guys didn't read it.
Sorry.
Asked why the next meeting will not be scheduled, but if you could amend that.
You're tough.
Tell me again where that is.
It is in... I will give you mine.
Next to the last sentence.
Yeah.
It was in the last sentence, okay?
Asked why.
Can you add four or faster, Mr. Chairman?
So do we have a motion? We have a second? Any further discussion?
As amended, though.
As amended, yes. I said that.
So the motion is as amended. I would second that.
You seconded it. Any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Just a little quiz, see if anybody's reading. Okay, the June 5th minute meetings, if you'd look at them?
Now I have to find something. Now I have to find something.
That's right.
Lucky Luciano.
Last meeting, so July. When's his last meeting?
June.
Right. June, last meeting in June, yeah. I forgot, he wasn't here for the July meeting. Well, I lied to you, Betsy. I thought I'd get you out in an hour and a half. I didn't do too well, did I? I didn't. Good thing the gym's closed.
Is it really?
Can I redeem myself? Can I redeem myself?
Sure.
Didn't you find...
No, just the actual making of the motion.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of June 5th, 2019.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yes, it would appear that in the last... On page 1, on the fifth line, it says that she said that upon the purchase of the property on November 14, 2016, no landscaping or excavation business either existed or there was no landscaping or excavation business. So it was strictly commercial property. Right here. It's either no...
There was no, or no landscaping or excavation business existed, comma. Either way, you want to write it.
Yep. So do we have a... Can we amend, Jim? Can we accept a motion to amend on page 1?
I make a motion to accept the June 5th, 2019, meeting minutes as amended.
Okay. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
I used to be a teacher. Remember that.
You wouldn't know, would you, Mike?
I'll start going toe-to-toe. I was a high school teacher.
Big surprise to me. What did he teach, Jim?
All right, let's look at the June 19th.
That's a low blow. I shouldn't say that.
What are you doing?
June 19th.
Coach, Don's minutes.
You and I were absent for this one. Mm-hmm, so was I. June 19th. It was in California.
Betsy, is de minimis one word or two words?
Two.
It is two, dead minimis, okay.
I used it.
You like that word.
I like that word. I like that word. It's Latin.
Do I have a motion?
Move to accept the minute meetings of June 19th, 2019.
I have a comment on this one.
Do we have a second?
Got a comment.
What's your comment?
Huh?
On page 2, third line down, says, "With exception of the fact that the front setback is 32.7," and then it goes semicolon. Then we should have just feet in there, so it's clear. It's not inches or some other unit of measurement.
Amy's not going to like you.
She's not here to defend herself.
7.4 feet, is that what it should have been?
No.
32.7 feet.
Feet.
And then period.
Yes.
You could still put a comma after feet.
Yeah. It's not a semicolon. So motion to accept as amended?[1647.83]